Okay.
It is now 7:00 PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, November 6, 2023. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Demme.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Gins.
Here.
Mr. Carubis.
Here.
Ms. Fostick.
Here.
And Mr. Rising.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Carubis, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one word salute today. Ms. Fostick.
District 204 students achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. The board salutes Bryce George, Micah Ginsburg, a junior at Wabonzi Valley, and seniors Austin Janino and Sam Lohman for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. Bryce's service project was creating 200 comfort kits for pediatric cancer patients which were delivered to Lurie Children's Hospital. Micah contributed to the community by constructing a fridge and pantry for indivisible Aurora. Austin's Eagle Scout project involved the creation and construction of a pollinator garden and bench at Hobson West Park in Naperville. Sam, on the other hand, constructed display walls and mobile message boards for the Tall Grass Lightning Swim Team to highlight the team's achievements. Congratulations to all the students on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout.
Thanks.
I understand our student is here. I'd like them to come up to the front so we can get a picture.
Bryce.
Bryce.
I think it's Bryce.
Yeah.
In front of the telephone or behind the telephone?
Probably in front.
Congratulations.
Good work.
Thank you.
Everybody, can you come in front of the door?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
I'm sure everyone noticed our lights tonight. We are acknowledging Diwali, which is an important holiday for many people. It's a festival of lights. It celebrates the triumph of light over darkness, good over evil, and the human ability to overcome. We encourage everyone to be a light in their community. I like to believe we are up here as a board, one of those lights, so thank you. Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by our residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. Tonight, we have three speakers. The first is David Kalina. Oh, you know, I forgot to do the student report. I'll do it after.
Thanks to the board president, board members, and Superintendent Tally. My name is David Kalina. I am a Project Arrow teacher at Georgetown, a parent of a Matia Valley High School junior who also went to Brookdale and to Hill. I also previously served as a member of the Project Arrow Leadership Team under Dr. Rhodes and as a writer of the district's common core math curriculum. I'm also a stroke survivor, so please bear West Navy as respect to timing as I frequently run over my tongue and have to reorganize my thoughts. At Georgetown, I have seen extreme discrepancies between the opportunities afforded to different kids, different students with respect to math. So, and those opportunities manifest themselves in performance discrepancies. What you're looking at here are two years of data. I did request the Freedom of Information Act last year to get the math data disaggregated between accelerated math and non-accelerated math students. So, the top six graphs are from pre-COVID 2018. They all go from third grade, fourth grade, to fifth grade. Meeting expectations, green. Score points away from meeting expectations, and then the other color is red, partially met, dark red, did not meet. So, as these discrepancies were there ahead of time before COVID, and as you look, I did make the separate note on these two years that in the states, so the states, I'm going to turn this, the states' information was they had 25% of their students who passed the test in 2018-19, 26% of their students who passed. Especially as you look at the data, in fourth and fifth grade, our students have such a minimal chance of meeting or exceeding those expectations unless they are in accelerated math. There, I present the data pretty much without other comment. I will be forwarding you this and the other data that I have seen. I would love the chance to explain why I think these discrepancies exist, and I would also love the board superintendent or other administrations at the CEC.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
To talk to teachers who helped write the district curriculum and see if they see these discrepancies. Thank you very much for your time. Okay.
We can borrow that, Alicia.
I know where to find you.
I know. I know where to find you, too. Nice job. Nice job.
Hello, my name is Alicia Smith. I taught with David at Georgetown. I also taught at Kendall. I attended Wabonzi and Gregory. I live in the Gomber area. I am now also a math teacher in 2003. For a few years now, I've been coming to you all and talking to you about how families and students and teachers and principals can only do so much to have successful schools. And as cabinet members and as board members, you all have a responsibility as well in creating equitable boundaries. That is something that only you can do. I've been told that I have an agenda from some of you all. I've been told that not everybody can get what they want. So, the last data has been released by the state, our IAR scores, and now there are two targeted schools in 2004. Are you getting what you wanted? Brookdale has been overpopulated since I was a teacher in 2004. The boundaries barely made a dent in that, and now Brookdale is a targeted school. Longwood, Longwood's low-income percentage last year was 45%. It increased 15%, 15%. So, what happened to their test scores? Plummeted way below the state average, which also should be embarrassing that we have any schools in 2004 whose test scores are below the state average. Longwood's low-income percentage is 61%, the same as Georgetown, which is higher than the state average of 50%, and it's three times higher than our district average of 18.7%. Meanwhile, as I keep saying, 2003, whose low-income percentage is similar to ours, there's a 17%, doesn't have a single school who is not above the state average in ELAM math, does not have a single targeted school, and does not have a single school that's above the state average in low income, let alone two to three times their district average. We are going in the wrong direction, and we need you all to help create equitable schools. We should be embarrassed that we have targeted schools. We should be embarrassed that we have schools that are below the state average in ELAM math. So, now what was going on with 605 Aurora, 60504 Aurora is now happening in North Naperville. Sometimes it seems like you all think that the reputation of the district relies on Niqua and his feeders. It doesn't. The district's reputation is on Georgetown, Longwood, Fisher, McCarty, and now Brookdale. We need equitable schools. We need a chance.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
For our teacher and principals to have successful schools. Thank you.
Eva Starks is the next speaker.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and board members. First, let me say that we are grateful for all that you do to help our students become the best versions of themselves in District 204. We know that as teachers and administrators, you do not receive the gratitude you deserve for serving our students daily. Your job is not for the faint heart. Thank you for your dedication and hard work. For as long as I can remember, we have seen similar data for our Black African-American students in the district on the school report card. We are seeing more academic and social resources being utilized to help students who are not meeting expectations in the classroom by the district, and that is really appreciated. Can we do more? Absolutely. This is a multi-pronged approach. We must build a community with our parents and students. Parents, we encourage you to get involved where you can with your child's school and education. I know it's tough sometimes when parents are working a few jobs to make ends meet so that they can volunteer to help our students do so. If you, as a parent, can volunteer. Now, we recognize that many students in the district are doing well, and that is notable. However, what is concerning in the school report card for the district is some of the results from the African-American students. The all-test proficiency measure, which is the proficiency rate for students, combined testing in ELA, math, and science in the elementary and high schools. Black students are at 40%, which is one of the lowest of all the demographic groups. And in addition to that, of course, Longwood, as Ms. Smith mentioned, Longwood and Brookdale have now been designated as targeted schools. What does this mean? Of course, more work is needed to support our students, Black students, children with disabilities, low-income students. So, we ask, you know, the district has a strategic plan and an equity plan that takes pride in efforts, take, in its efforts on equity. So, all of our students deserve a great education, no matter their race, disability, or income. Let's continue to do the work, strategize, collaborate, partner together to improve all our students' academic and social outcomes. Thank you. By the way, I do live in the district. My children have graduated, but I still volunteer, you know, in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are going to go back now to the student representative report by Rishvath Venath. I'm sorry, from Matia Valley.
I thought we forgot.
I know. Sorry. I skipped over it.
Thought I was safe.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rishvath Venath. I'm the Executive Board Representative for Matia Valley High School. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you all today. First off, let's get started with some general updates. We just received our ISBE School Report Card, and we are honored to share that we scored a top 10% of the state. Thank you to Ms. Furia and the team of Sins of Matia for facilitating a tough conversation with students about the situation in Palestine and Israel. The students did a great job during the discussion by sharing their opinions without being disrespectful to others. Ms. Flanagan, Ms. Abriscado, Ms. Reina King, and Ms. Hardke organized the blood drive this week. It was a huge success with 97 donors and 291 lives saved. A big thank you to all, to everyone that could come to the event and be such, be part of such an important event. Congratulations to Eric T. He is down at the TEAI conference today and will be recognized with the New Teacher of the Year Award from the Technology Education Association of Illinois. Well done, Mr. Eric. It's a great Mustang fight to have you on the team. Congratulations to Mr. Marshall on being awarded the PTSA October Tireless Teacher, an award well deserved for Mr. Marshall. Next up, our Fine Arts Division. Congratulations to the directors, cast, and crew at the fall play. She Kills Monsters was a big success with four show hosted this past weekend. Kudos to the Art Department for hosting another dark horse gallery event this morning. We're always impressed with the direction and the dedication of our students at Matia Valley High School. A job well done to 58 Matia Valley student musicians on their acceptance and participation in the Illinois Music Education Association District 9 Concert and Jazz Festivals. Our students competed at an audition with musicians from approximately 50 high schools in the western suburbs, and the auditions are very challenging as they include collegiate-level materials to prepare for. Being selected for this is a very big honor, and a very, in a very competitive district, is quite an accomplishment. These students will be performing at the Jazz Festivals of St. Charles East High School on November 4th, excuse me, 4th, and Concert Festival of Dundee Crown High School on November 11th. Overall, a big success for our Fine Arts Department, and we're always great, excited to see what our talented Mustangs can accomplish. Next up, we have our Athletics Division. Girls volleyball achieved the title of regional champs. Boys soccer made it to regional championship game, and the girls cross-country qualified for state as a team. Congratulations to the following girls: Camia Baker, Kira Nelson, Zoe Kirkman, Brooke Hornig, Bella Sabine, Julia Hannan, and Maya Hall. Congratulations and good luck in states. From the boys cross-country team, Austin Brown was sent to state for which he qualified as an individual. He'll be competing at Peoria this Saturday. Good luck, Austin. And for the girls swim and dive team, they competed in sectionals this past weekend, and they are sending a relay team which includes Emily Schalk, Molly Schalk, Ally Leslie, and Sarah Volks. Good luck on Friday, and we hope to hear great results. Girls tennis qualified three people to states, which includes Sangeeta Seif, finished with one victory, and the doubles team of Sophia Akhale and Serena Salim are 1-1, which means they'll be competing in a second round of consolation. Good luck and congratulations to the coach Klausing and the athletes. Overall, the Athletics Division had a great start and we're, we're only going to go further from here. So many great things happening across the board, and this is just a snapshot of Matia Valley's success and potential. That's it for the November Board Report. Thank you for your time. Stay safe and go-go Mustangs.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and Superintendent Report. We will start with the Superintendent Report. Dr. Tally.
Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Ed and the Indian Prairie community, I will start my comments with sad news. Julian Geronimo Sanchez, a student in ninth grade at Matia, passed away on October 17th. Julian became part of the Indian Prairie community when he first enrolled at Hill Middle School in 2023. I ask that we take a moment of silence in Julian's memory. Thank you. At the last Board of Ed meeting, I mentioned that many of the Board of Ed would be running or walking at the annual IPF 5K event. I want to thank everyone for a great race day. Thanks to the hard work of the runners, organizers, those cheering on the sidelines, the event was a success. IPF was able to raise more than $92,000. Half of those funds will go directly back to the schools. The other funds support IPF projects including Farnite's Festival, Robotics, Valley Runway, and other projects. I want to praise the Matia Track students who were out there cheering us on as we went past them. Personally, I also want to praise Graham Elementary School for their cheer squads. I know that there were many other cheer squads, but they were the ones on, they were on other parts of the routes that I didn't run because I didn't do the 10K nor did I do the half marathon. High praise to Brookdale for raising more than $9,000, more than any other school in our district. On Wednesday, the Parent Portal to sign up for Parent-Teacher Conference will open at 10:00 AM. The portal closes on Native American Heritage Month. This year, in part, during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the countless contributions of Native people, past and present, honor the influence they have had
The emphasis is placed on growth in both English Language Arts and Math, which is measured using the IAR assessment given each spring. The rate of chronic autism is the next largest factor of the age. Proficiency in ELA, math, and science, the progress of our Yale students, and participation in the Five Essentials Survey are the remaining components. At the high school level, the state does not have a measure for growth, so composite graduation rate becomes the most important factor. The other factors are similar to elementary and middle school, except ninth grade on track is added as an additional high school measure. The process begins with the raw data for each of the criteria. IFB has developed sets of rules to translate raw data with a score between zero and 100 for each measure. For example, for chronic autism, to receive the full 100 points, a school would have to have a chronic autism rate of zero. For each 1% increase in chronic autism, two points less earned by, for the school with a 50% lower chronic autism rate would get minus 4.0. Each of those scores is then weighted and added to give each school a score between zero and a hundred overall. Every school in the state has been sorted from highest to lowest scoring. IFB identifies the top ten percent and the score for the school at the bottom of this group. That's the score for exemplary designation. At the other end of the list, the bottom five percent of schools are identified, given a designation of comprehensive support. The highest school in this group sets the score for our support designation. At this point, IFB will go back and repeat this process for each student group that exists in each building in the state. So each of these student groups will have their own score in addition to that overall building score. These student group scores are then compared to the score for the school at the top of that comprehensive support group. If any school in a school group, any student group in a school has a score below this level, the designation of exemplary or remenable is changed to targeted support. This slide shows the distribution of designations for District 204 this year. The five exemplary designations is a decline from last year. While we've had schools identified for improvement and support under previous accountability systems, this is the first time we've had schools identified as targeted under the current system. And this year, we have two. Schools identified for targeted support, or for adult, which was identified for the score of this black, brown, and American group. Longwood was identified for students in that group, as well as those in children with disabilities group and below income group. These schools will now be required to participate in a four-year school improvement process that will require them to set goals and identify strategies to improve the performance of their targeted groups. The first year is identified as a planning year. At the end of this year, we will be bringing information and plans back to the board for approval. Next, we will begin to dig into some of the data and measures behind the scoring process. First, we're looking at the proficiency data for English Language Arts based on the Illinois through eight each spring. Student scores on these tests are assigned to one of five performance levels, with one being the lowest and five being the highest. IFB considers scores in levels four to five to be proficient, so that total is displayed at the top of each column. As we will do in many of the data displays tonight, we're showing data from the last two years, but also including data from the eighteen nineteen school year to provide pre-pandemic context. You can see here that proficiency in ELA has improved in the last year. The students are not scoring at the same level they were before the pandemic. That trend is mirrored in the state level data, although our proficiency rates are significantly Looking at similar data from math. We saw a slight increase in proficiency, but again at levels that are lower than in the eighteen nineteen. The trend at the state is similar, although there is a greater increase from the previous year at the state level. We saw in ELA proficiency rates are significantly higher in District 204 than they are across the state. As was mentioned earlier, growth is one of the main factors in deciding each building's summit designation. Students that have taken a previous Illinois assessment of readiness are assigned a growth percentile that shows how they're changing from the previous year compared to other students in the state. A growth percentile of fifty indicates average growth. As is shown in this graph, there was a slight decline in math growth, but a significant drop in ELA growth. While both remain above average, this decline was a significant factor in our designation this year. So now we're looking at similar data from the high school level, where your SAT is used for accountability. IFB classifies each student scoring on a four performance level and considers level three and four to be proficient. As is shown here, there was a slight decline in the percent of students that were proficient on the evidence-based reading and writing portion of the assessment last year. We can also see that the state as a whole has a slight increase, although District 204 is still outperforming the state by a wide margin. In math, we see another slight decline There are white variety measures reported on our report cards. These are a few that we have typically shared in the past. In all of these cases, there are no significant differences from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We're actually two or three pandemic numbers. The next two measures are ones that continue to change and have an impact on our academic results. First is student mobility, which measures the amount of students that are Since then, mobility across the state has declined, while hours have continued to increase. Last year, we had a mobility higher than the state average for the first time. Second measure is chronic autism. This measures the percent of students, at least ten percent of school days during the year for any reason. This is another measure that increased significantly after the pandemic and continues to rise for District 204. In this display, we can see the difference in chronic autism in our various student groups. Though, it is the many of our groups that were most impacted during the pandemic are also showing the highest rate of damage. We'll now move on to some other measures that are not a part of the report card, but we have typically reported on in the past. Our first is average SAT scores. These are the same results that we saw earlier, but they are being reported in an average score rather than the state performance level. While we do see slight increases in our averages, the differences from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year are not significantly, are not significantly significant. Although the changes from the pre-pandemic year eighteen nineteen are. Here we see that EBRW results broken out by student group. While the over change, overall change in the last two years is not significantly, we are seeing a significant drop for some groups of students. Here are the math results, and the same conclusion applies here. While the overall change is not significantly significant, the drops for certain groups of students are. We're going to wrap these additional measures up by looking at our AP results from last year. After a dip during the pre-pandemic, during the pandemic, AP participation has rebounded to the point that last year, more students participated in more tests than ever before. And even with this increased rate of participation, our pass rates have reached the all-time high. I will now turn it over to Dr. Lee to talk about the next steps and school improvement planning.
Thank you, Charles. The, as Charles alluded through with all of that data, so what are our next steps? And that's really what I wanted to spend the next two slides just talking about. The first is we look at data from three levels of review. And the first level of review, this slide indicates would be at the most important level, which is at our school level. That level of review has already started. The IAR scores that Charles just shared with, that appeared on our student report card have been available to our building leaders since the summer. And so they have been able to start to review those scores and help incorporate those into their school improvement plans, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Along with those school improvement plans teams that they have, their IOT teams, instructional leadership teams have also been working on this data since the summer. And what that has allowed is for the beginning of the school year to get somewhat of a running start at, at what this data means and how to incorporate some levels of improvements that are going to elevate student performance. The second level of review occurs at the level team meetings. All of our assistant supes in our teacher and learning department start to, along with during the summer, start to review this data at a district level in their individual team meetings. What that allows for the different levels to do is to not only look at best practices, to not only share that data with their peers, but to talk about and collaborate on things that are working in some, some of the individual schools and some of the things that they're not potentially seeing some growth in. Those conversations and that planning has also started taking place since the summer. But more importantly, really, they start kicking those meetings off in August. And then the final level of review occurs at our district level at, with our cabinet. And what we have already done is we've actually already had one of those district level data review meetings where we look specifically at not just our IAR scores, but also our SAT scores. And we've selected a representative level of principals from each level to sit down with our cabinet team. And the whole objective and purpose of those meetings is to elevate student performance, is to take a look at the, the data from a district level, from a thirty thousand foot lens, to take a look at it for all schools and then to also look back and what are some of the things that we're missing from a district standpoint? What are some of the resources that need to be addressed? And also, what are the things that principals can bring back to us as a district level team to say, these are some of the things that we, we also need to identify. The second slide that I have up here is really the heart of where some of the improvement plans, and that's not the purpose of tonight, but it really is to just to give an overview of what a school improvement cycle looks like. Cause it is a cycle, it's a yearly cycle that occurs every single year with our, with our schools. The first step is to really indicate what's the current status of school performance. And we are looking at school performance as it's measured against state, district, and school's long-term goals. The second piece that you see up there is to really summarize, is to summarize what some of those schools findings are. That's built on the Illinois Balanced Accountability Measure Committee, or IBAM, as they're known. And they're a set of needs assessments that are identified, that the schools will then use some of those templates to put into their school improvement plans. The third action is going to be identify, and that's going to be resources. That's going to be any resource inequities that may exist, and that could come from a programming standpoint. That could be everything from different ways to fund some of those programs. And so a school is going to sit down and talk about those. And then the final piece, which really is where the rubber starts to meet the road, is in the details. What are some of those interventions? What are some of the activities? What are some of the strategies that the school is going to implement in that school improvement plan? Also, what's included is how they're going to address some of the gaps that we are seeing in some of the underrepresented groups that may be in their schools, whether it's identified on the school report card based on the number of students, which is twenty, as Charles mentioned, or not. Each one of our schools is, wants to start to address those. It's a cyclical process that occurs every single year, regardless of the rating or summative designation that a school gets. We want our school improvement plans to be very dynamic and not static, and so this process continues to occur. Like I said, we, we could spend another presentation on this, but that's really just a high-level overview of what goes into that school improvement plan. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Charles.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. In the last portion of the presentation, we're going to look at the metrics within the strategic plan that are related to academic achievement and growth. The first two metrics are both related to growth. At the elementary and middle school levels, this is measured using the growth from fall to spring on the I-Ready assessment. At the high school level, growth is measured year to year using the achievement and SAT assessments. In both cases, we're comparing ourselves to national norms for growth. Meeting the goal of having fifty percent of our students meeting or exceeding these norms means that our students are growing faster than their national peers. The results from last year show that at both levels, our students are meeting the growth of their national peers, or exceeding the growth of their national peers in both reading and math. Ask us to compare the rate, and all of our student groups are meeting standards within the rest of the state. These results are from the state assessments given each spring. We saw earlier that our, but that overall, our students are meeting standards at a higher rate than the state. Here, we can see that this is also true for each of our student groups. These results are for elementary and middle school students and English Language Arts. Switching to math, we see that the same holds true, and generally the difference are even greater for math than they were for ELA. At the high school level, we see that our students are outperforming their statewide peers in every group based on the evidence-based reading and writing results from last year's SAT. And finally, we see that the pattern we saw in the younger grades continues at the high school level. They name great students outperforming their peers across each student group. And at this point, we will turn it back to the board for any questions that they might ask.
Great, thank you. Mr. Rising.
Oh, you're going to regret asking me first. Okay. No, that's okay. I'll go. So the first thing I'll say, I think we have gotten too caught up on what proficiency means, and I'm saying that as a parent and as a school board member. If you want to know how your child's doing in school, ask your teacher. And I got that from Dr. Tally. Don't let proficiency of a school, of a group that we measure, define your student. And I'm, I apologize, board, but I'm going to go through this again and give a description of what proficiency means, if you don't mind, and if you'll humor me. But two thousand and ten, thirteen years ago, we used to use ISAT. At that time, our district and all our student groups were seventy-five percent to ninety-five meets or exceeds were 75% to 95% meets or exceeds standards. I'll say it again, 75% to 95% of our students, all our students, met or exceeded standards. That test was changed in 2013. They cut the scores so the scores would appear lower to measure growth more than proficiency. At that time, our scores as a district dropped from 75% to 80% meets or exceeds. In 2014 and 15, our state moved to the PARK assessment. That was a nationwide assessment. And at that time, our district ranged from 54, well, actually about 54% for ELA and math. So in three years, because of two, three different, two different tests, three different cut scores, our district appeared to be 85 to 95% proficient, down to 54% proficient. That is not because our kids got more dumb in three years. That was because different tests, different measures, different cut scores. In 2019, Illinois came up with their own test called the IAR. This test was meant overall to not measure proficiency, but measure growth. They deemed that growth was the most important thing. We want all our kids to get proficient, but we want to measure growth. Illinois, and by the way, every proficiency test and every assessment in every state differs. Every way proficiency is measured in every single state differs. But I will tell you, Illinois, for ELA and math, ranks in the top five for most rigorous tests and learning standards of any state in the country. ISB's goal, again, was to measure proficiency. So again, I will say, if you want to know how your kid is doing, don't look at proficiency scores, ask your teacher. I will make the argument that our kids and our students are doing better. We're not at pre-pandemic levels. However, our scores in ELA and math are the highest they've been in three years for all students. We are approaching our 2019 proficiency scores. So, you know, I also think it's important to mention that every single one of our schools ranks in the top 25%. There's been comments about certain schools, and our students at those schools and our educators at those schools are absolutely amazing. And every single one of our schools is in the top 25% in the state. However, we do have issues, and I'm not denying that or ignoring that. My, you know, I don't look to point fingers because I think our students do as well as they can. But I also think our students, and answer this question, Louis, our students aren't graded on the IAR test from the state, are they?
When you see graded, like?
The kids don't get a grade for taking the assessment, the state assessment?
Correct.
And would you say that most of our kids know that they're not being graded on the IAR test?
Yes.
Okay. I'm wondering, our kids are not dumb. I'm wondering if they know that this test really isn't important to them. And I'm not saying that they're not trying their hardest because I know the majority of our kids want to do as best as they can on everything they do. But I'm wondering if some of that plays into it. But again, I have to look at, as a board member, of things that could be impacting some of our scores. Where I am concerned and where I would like to understand these school improvement plans is something that was mentioned, which is absenteeism. When I'm looking at our African-American absenteeism across the district, it's at 29% absenteeism. Our African-American students at Brookdale, again, the district average is 29%. At Brookdale, it's 47%. District-wide, 29. At Brookdale, it's 47 for African-American. At Longwood, it's 44% absenteeism.
Mark, to be clear, the 29% is African-American students across
Across the district, yes.
Across the district generally is, what, 18%?
19%.
Yeah.
Yep. So, you know, we have two student groups that we measure at Brookdale and Longwood. Their absenteeism rate is double. I'm wondering if that doesn't play into some of the scores we're seeing. I'm not saying it's, I'm not trying to take the blame off of the district or of us doing a better job, but you have to look at of themes that we're seeing here. And my concern is that if kids are out half the time, 44 and 47% of school, how much can they really learn? And again, I'm not blaming that on the students or the parents. But this is a solution that I think we all need to contribute to making better. And that's my concern. And those absenteeism numbers at Longwood for the other two groups that are targeted, the low-income and the children with disabilities, again, very much higher than what the district average is for all students across the district for low-income and students with disabilities. You know, I would love for us to have a presentation on what we could do for absenteeism. I think there's some good information out there. I almost think there should be some type of MTSS or RTI that we should do specifically towards absenteeism, where we're focusing on the kids that are really out of school a lot and trying to create some things to help them get back in school. But again, this is a combined effort with all of us, right? I think it's the district. I think, you know, I hate to put this on the teachers, but the studies show that children and their parents want to hear from their teachers. So the teachers, I think, if we let the teachers know and give them tools to remind the kids and the parents how important it is to be in school, I think that carries more weight when it comes from the teacher. And, you know, I think we need to encourage that because that is the outlier that I'm seeing, is that absenteeism, especially with those groups. So, I apologize I talked so long, but I just want to leave it open on that absenteeism part for any of you guys to comment.
So, today, in fact, we had a conversation at cabinet with Jennifer Anamaker, who is our Director of Attendance and Student Engagement. So she's working actually with all of the the elementary schools actually have chronic absenteeism in their buildings. They've created it as part of their, if you will, an addendum to their school improvement plans. So we're pleased to see that happening. In fact, she'll be working with them again this week. The issue of absenteeism is important because if, to your point, if children are not there and they have difficulty in learning. And as Mr. Spandell mentioned, absenteeism at the elementary and middle level counts 20% of the report card score. It's the second highest item that counts on that score. And we know for, at the high school level, it's a little bit less. I think it's 5%, but it is an important aspect of it. And I'll end by saying something that another superintendent said. Absenteeism is the one thing that schools districts have very little control over. If they're in school, we can get them to learn. And I think the importance of getting children to school, we cannot speak enough about that. Because if they are in school, then we have the ability to work with them and get them to learn.
And I'll send you a video that I watched that was given to the American Association of Superintendents just recently, a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, I understand that there's only limited of what we can do. But, you know, for two years, we told parents and kids that if you're not feeling well, don't come to school. We need to change that narrative and start saying, it is important you're at school. You know, we need you to be at school because it's making it more difficult, not only on the students, but then they fall behind and they're not caught up. And then there could be discipline problems that relate from that. It creates more stress on the teachers for having to catch up those kids that are behind. And, you know, so I hope at some of these schools, you know, especially Brookdale and Longwood and some of our Title I schools, where we've definitely looked at the classroom sizes, that we're also looking at staffing. And I know TAs are hard to get right now, but, and I would encourage everybody to apply to be a teacher's aide. But, you know, that makes a huge difference when there's support to help with some of those kids that need some of that catching up. So, thanks.
Victoria, or would you like to say any comments or questions?
Hi, good evening. So, when I noticed the AP scores kind of on the rise over the past few years and then the SAT kind of more on the decline, I may be wrong about this, but I kind of interpreted that as teachers have been probably doing a really great job adjusting after the pandemic to meet students' needs within the AP classrooms test prep. And so I think that'll be really beneficial for them going forward. Adding on to Board Member Rising's point, there also has been kind of less incentive to study for SAT and ACT just because colleges have been test optional. But I think moving forward as like schools like Purdue are transitioning back to requiring tests, I think that it will be kind of vital that students take advantage of courses like college test prep. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Those are great points.
How about Ms. Dumbing?
So, you know, seeing the, this particular report card, it is challenging because we've had some demographics that we've seen over the specifically to those demographics. So, you know, continuing to make sure that, and we've talked about it, but I will be very interested in seeing, you know, as we work on the strategic plan, we, when I looked at, well, I'll make this comment, then I'll go to the slide. Seeing when we come, as you report back to us, it will be really, really important to see what we outline for those specific, not only schools, but those demographics within those schools. It is very important. And one of the things that Board Member Rising said, it's a comprehensive. And I think we all know that. It's on us, it's on the school, it's on the parents, it's on the teachers, and it's on the student. So it really is comprehensive. The information as far as chronic absenteeism is vital. And I really hope that we help the, those It would be interesting to see if we have any particular plans in reaching out to families and that type of thing. May not be able to share conversation, but as you come back to us, you know, what type of growth or positive moves are we being able to have in helping to find out, you know, are there some challenges with those particular families that they can't, that's preventing students to get? And I have no idea what it could be. But are there things, wraparound things, that they don't know that we can provide support for? So I think that's crucial for us to make sure that we know and that we can work with those families on. Let's see. Hold on. Slide 31, and I kind of mentioned it a little bit. But do we, is the plan, as we look at the evidence success and set those priority and objectives to come back to us, not only in the school growth, but in those particular demographics at the schools? And is that the plan?
Yes, in terms of the targeted schools?
Yes.
And I'll let Charles really outline this. But part of that plan ensures that we are reporting back to the board at regular intervals about not only the plan itself, but the progress that's being made in the plan. Charles, I'll, anything that, if you want to add?
Yes, I can chime in. So yes, and again, we are, as I mentioned earlier, this is the first time we've had schools identified as targeted under this new accountability system. But part of that process is that schools will have to identify strategies and goals for those targeted groups. And we will have a regular reporting practice to the board on that planning and what those goals are.
That's really vital and really important. Are we able to get type financial resources from the state?
I'll let Dr. Tally, I know the answer, but I know he'll speak to it.
Yes, so during this year, which is the planning year, the two schools receive, have available $10,000. They have to write a grant to get the money. And then next year, they will receive $15,000. They have available up to $15,000 that they can use. That funding can be used to really support the staff in the building during the work of reviewing data, coming up with the plan, and then implementing that plan.
I saw that, or does that include any, do you know, do those resources include anything that directly can impact students? I mean, one-on-one, or not?
Not really. The $15,000 is really meant for the work that the teachers are going to be doing with each other, meaning planning, reviewing the data. However, it could be that the school could determine that they are going to do, I'm going to make this up, a homework club, and they want to pay a teacher to do that. That might fit within there. But there are certain parameters that the state is requiring. If, luckily, no, we had a comprehensive school, there would be more money for that. But not at the targeted level. It's $15,000 next year, $10,000 this year.
One thing I'll just say, and I don't, if we, we do such a great job in applying and receiving grants. If there are any opportunities for us in that one-on-one interaction, you know, the majority, we have wonderful students. We have great students who are smart students all across our district. But as well, our students and families that have those means spend a lot of time in providing additional resources so our students can excel to their level. So those families that don't have those resources, you know, they're already at a level where they're not, where they don't have those opportunities. So any type of grants that we come across where we could apply for those direct teacher-to-student resources would be really, really beneficial. So those are my comments. You know, little, very disconcerting to see that those areas have happened in those two schools. I do feel that, I know we're extremely committed to seeing us move forward, and I look forward to seeing you guys come back, maybe on a little more frequent basis than usual, to provide us updates as we move forward.
Ms. Fazdak?
So, aside from the absenteeism, which has been already touched on, I don't feel like I need to go into further, but obviously that's a thing we need to figure out and do what we can to support. The only way that, when I read through this and really tried to understand it, I suppose it's a mixed blessing, in my opinion, that we have this opportunity. It's not, we certainly don't want to be in a position where we have schools that are targeted. However, that we have this opportunity. It's not, we certainly don't want to be in a position where we have schools that are targeted. However, it is allowing for a period of self-reflection and intentional planning going forward. And I think in in some way that is an opportunity for us to do better, to figure out how we can serve our students better. And so viewing it from that kind of flipped framework is helpful for me to digest it, as to say, how can our our teachers and our administrators and our families work together to to get these schools maybe in a better place than they were before this? You know, how can we go back above instead of hovering at that level? You know, how can we get them back to commendable and even further? So that that's really my perspective on digesting this information. And I I feel really um positive about the teams we have in place to start to address those issues and plans to move forward.
Can I ask a question too?
Yep.
You did say that once they are targeted, they're targeted for, like, they have that designation for four years, right? So there's, even if they move out of that, they're still have that designation for four years?
Correct.
So, I can speak to that. Um, each school is given a new designation each year. So Brookdale and Longwood, although they're targeted this year, next year could be commendable or exemplary, depending on how those scores work. There will still be a notation that they're in the process of school improvement for that four years, uh, but they're not locked into that targeted designation for four years.
Mr. Karubis?
Charles, I'm going to back the truck up a little bit and ask some general questions here, just about like student attendance. I think we're all delving into um some of the particulars on chronic absenteeism. But it kind of all starts with student attendance, and that's a whole different um metric, dynamic, data point. Can you tell me a little bit about student attendance generally?
So there's a couple ways, there's really two main ways that is we measure student attendance. They measure average student attendance, which we have always been, you know, in the ninety-five percent range, although that has dipped. And then they also measure chronic absenteeism, which, as we said, was students that missed ten percent or more days, which is once a student misses the eighteenth day and during a school year, they will be considered chronically absent, which basically works out to missing one day every other week.
So on the chronic absentee metric, it's saying that we have nineteen percent of our students are missing at least a month of school?
They're missing, well, they're missing at least eighteen days of school. So that's three and a half school weeks, yes.
Okay. And now, and so that can be broken down into demographics and schools, so when Mark mentioned that the absentee rate was forty-seven percent, the chronic absentee rate, forty percent of that population was missing eighteen or more days of the year. And I'm assuming we can measure that because it's an eight, it's a ten percent or more. We might have some students that are missing thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, right?
Correct.
And now tell me how some of these other data points factor into student attendance. On Slide nineteen, you talk about student mobility. What is that?
So student mobility measures students moving in and out of the district. And what we do know from historical data is that students that have been here and stayed here longer achieve higher, which isn't to say that every student that's moving in is achieving at a lower level, because we have a lot of students that move in that achieve at very high levels. But the trend has been, if you look at students that are high school students and where they are scoring on these standardized assessments, the ones that, as a group, the ones that have been with us longer score higher. And that all relates back to some of those growth rates that we talked about, that because our students are typically achieving higher growth rates than their national peers, the longer they're with us, the more they're getting ahead.
And so kind of the student mobility is we might have a student that joins us in December, and they attend, they might attend full-time, but they they just joined us in December, right?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, or you have a student that starts the beginning of the year and then leaves in December. But they might have had good attendance, and but that's what goes into the student mobility data point.
Yeah, so, yeah, the mobility data point is anyone that has either moved in or out, and there are some actual buffers on the beginning and the ending of the year. Now, in terms of accountability, the students that they count for efficiency and growth, they need to have been with us for, the state says, a hundred and thirty-four days.
Okay, now how does?
So I don't, we don't want to get too deep.
Yeah, that's, I definitely do not need that level of detail. I appreciate it, though. That's that's your job. How does student discipline um dovetail into this chronic absenteeism number? It talks about being absent both excused and unexcused, kind of absent for whatever reason. Is is student discipline a part of that chronic absenteeism number if you are out of school because of discipline?
Yes, that is a part of that. The only thing that is not counted is students that are medically homebound, that are receiving tutoring while they're at home. Other than that, any kind of absence is counted in that chronic absenteeism measure.
Okay. Well, besides, thanks for that explanation. I think that is um, that's some good data. I think our focus should be on trying to figure out why, what we can do better to um increase our attendance, however you want to define that. But the I am impressed that we have the results that we have based on the absentee data that we are presenting, which is an unfortunate reality. I think it um, I'm not satisfied. We've got, uh, we as a community have a lot of work to do to to get to get to people back into schools and focusing on um student achievement. But this is, I think we have a target to look at, which um once you delve into the different schools and the different um layers of it, hopefully we find a solution or some action items from that. So I think this is a good report. This is good data. I'm definitely looking forward to the action plans and being involved in that, um, as been said, so thanks.
I just want to just piggyback on something Mr. Karubis said. I'm glad he went down that road of of absenteeism. And and Charles mentioned, just about everything counts when a student is out of school towards chronic absenteeism. And I think that's important for everyone who's listening to understand. Anytime the child is out of school, basically counts. It's different from being truant from this, but the chronic absenteeism, when you're taking them on a vacation, when you're taking them, it almost all counts. So I think that's important.
Ms. Guns?
I have to say, I think at this point, you know, all the board members have really touched on, I I think what we all really wanted to talk about, which, you know, was the chronic absenteeism. Um, I do echo Ms. Dumbing's sentiment that I I do look forward to seeing also more. Um, obviously, the the plans going forward to kind of help um deal with the chronic absenteeism, but also more of the targeted groups as well. I very much look forward to seeing how we will be working with those groups, you know, all the different ones, based on race, program, all of it. So, um, I do want to say, though, I appreciate Ms. Fazdek's comment, and it it honestly was not even the way I had thought about it yet, but it it is a very good point. Obviously, ideally, we would not want any of our schools in the targeted group, but I do agree that I think it's a wonderful jumping off point for all of us to learn. Um, and even parents, you know, everybody in the district to kind of, to to learn what we can do differently, what we may, we've been doing right, what we need more of, and um, so I think, yeah, we we can take that in and kind of run with it that way. So I I do appreciate it. I really look forward to the the action plans going forward, as all of our board members have said, but I I would do want to thank you for this. Actually, very comprehensive report card of a lot of information.
Ms. Jane?
I I too don't have really much to add, um, except just to share how I'm I'm taking in most of these data points as simply that, data points that may give me um a picture of some of the general trends, but I I really uh like what Board Member Rising stated about how we can get lost in some of these numbers and forget, um, really what we need to do as parents and community members is reaching out to our student, seeing where they are at, understanding their journey, speaking with their teachers. I really do think that that's important. But again, this paints, gives us an idea of where we're at and allows us to create goals for ourselves so we can measure where we are at and where we want to be. For whatever the reason is that our students are not in school, I I find that deeply concerning. It's hard to do our our work when when they are not present. I also agree with Board Member Rising that I would love to have a deeper dive into this and to um just have a better understanding of why this may be the case, um, what could be the variety of reasons, and so that way, um, we might be able to strategically address this and use our resources more effectively in a more meaningful way, whatever that may be, as Board Member Dumbing suggested, might require. Certainly, we want to try to minimize the barriers that might be at play in preventing a student from coming to school, and if if that's something within our capacity to do, we surely would want to investigate that. I just have one question moving forward, uh, with regard to, let's see her, slide number twenty-eight, when we're looking at the cycle. Dr. Lee, you had mentioned that this is a dynamic cycle. When, in saying that, is this kind of a cycle you go through once a year or multiple times in a year? Or could you give us an example of how one building, like, what the academic calendar might look like for a building with this cycle, if that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. Um, I think for the purposes of, I'll answer it in two ways. For the purposes of the actual submission of the plan and review of the plan, it's a, it's a yearly plan that's submitted by the principals to their level assistant supes at the beginning of every year, uh, with those uh goals and actions, uh, items that are going to be used to help uh reach those goals. Now, the second part is the dynamic piece really comes in because we would encourage their goals to be not something that maybe they meet in a year, maybe it's a two- or three-year goal. And as they come back, uh, not only during the school year, but even as they prepare for that following year, what what has occurred with that goal? Um, are they, are they on track to meet it? Are they not on track to meet it? What are some of the uh action items that were done that they're not maybe receiving a good return on in terms of actual results so that they can update that? So there is nothing that says to a school that they cannot have the same type of goal in place for the following school year. What we don't want to see is just, which which is why that review is so critical at the um, at the assistant soup level. Uh, we want to make sure that they're seeing goals that are being stretched that where they can obtain them, whether it be in year one or whether it be in year three. And then also, um, throughout that year, sometimes you may have a a group of students that they have placed into their goal, um, and either a program mid-year is not working, or a program that maybe they were planning for just doesn't come to fruition. They may make changes right, right then and there. They're not going to wait till the end of the school year just to say, hey, we we know this is what we said we were doing, uh, a semester in. Maybe the goal was was something where they were bringing students out and 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 doing some one-on-one work. They're going to make adjustments regardless of what that plan says, if they're getting back some some real-time data on their own.
And there's, and based on slide number twenty-seven, if there's, if the assistant superintendent sees patterns or similar goals, strategies that need to be implemented, building leaders could communicate with each other and share their ideas and strategies, or what might have been effective based on what you laid out in number twenty-seven?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. Uh, I think that's why that review at that level is critical, so that they're talking with their peers about what some of their goals are. And the sharing of those ideas is is a very dynamic process. We we, you know, when I was a teacher, I was the best thief. I'm stealing ideas.
Absolutely.
What works, they're visiting classrooms, they're visiting the, um, you know, getting into those classrooms where maybe a teacher has some of those same uh challenges and and what they've done to to meet those challenges with their students, so can we repeat that? Can we duplicate that in your classroom? And then even at a a building-wide level, can we take some of those things that are working and and just uh scale that up so that it's working throughout the entire building?
Yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
So thank you. I think you've heard from everyone about the concerns on absenteeism. I mean, all of us poured over this data then when we received it. And if you go to slide twenty, I just want to, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I have to say, if you we're going in the wrong direction, nineteen point three. And it's nationwide. It's not just our school. It's everywhere. Um, so there needs to be a concerted effort to get these students in school. I can't imagine how difficult it is to miss a chronic absenteeism, I'm going to repeat it, is missing more than ten percent, ten percent or more of the class days. That is a lot when you're trying to teach somebody, you know, math, how to do multiplication, how to, you know, add fractions or whatever. If you're missing that many days, you're going to struggle no matter what. And when I looked at um some of the data, this is my engineer, I have to look at the data. I'm not going to call out the specifics, but I would encourage everyone that is concerned to go look at those schools and look at the groups that got targeted, because they range from forty-four percent absentee rate to forty-seven percent absentee rate. So it's, those kids, forty-seven percent of the African-American kids at one school miss more than ten percent of the days. And ten percent is the minimum. Like, was pointed out, it could be that they missed a lot more than that. So we we really do have an issue, and it impacts the student learning. And also, as we see, it impacts the way these schools are rated. And also, as we see, it impacts the way these schools are rated. So it has multiple impacts. And Charles, there was a question asked prior to the meeting that I thought was very enlightening, where you talked about Wabansy and how close they came to being exemplary. And I would like you to share that information. Lots to have targeted schools, but it is an opportunity to really examine what's going on and how to help our populations that are underperforming across all our schools, but specifically in those two. So with that, I would thank you. You have another?
President Donahue, I just wanted to say one thing. We were at a recent meeting for a few DuPage schools over the last week. And so this is an issue that is happening right in our area. We are not the only ones, but it is something that schools all in our district, in our county are facing. So again, it's critical, hopefully, helping to find out why and resources that we can help them get back in will aid.
Well, and when you, when you study the data and look at it, too, I mean, there is, appears to me, a strong correlation between attendance and whether or not you're a low-performing group. And it's like, we, all of us collectively, the parents and the schools school and have them sitting in their seats and learning and not at home. So with that, I will move on to the next topic.
Charles, thank you for calling in.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
So we now have our presentation from Mr. Matt Shipley regarding the 2023 tentative levy.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight's tentative levy presentation is aligned with strategic plan priority number four and Board Policy 4-30 on Revenue and Investments. It's also a required presentation under the Illinois School Code and state law for the adoption of our annual tax levy. Tonight's agenda, we, before we look at our levy specifically, I just want to spend a few minutes talking in general terms about the property tax process. It's a complicated tax that involves not just the district, but several other governmental entities. So I just want to talk through that process for a few minutes. We will then look at tonight's tentative levy request, the taxpayer impact of our tentative levy. And then finally, I'll close by talking through the remaining steps that will be required to adopt this 2023 levy. So as mentioned, the property tax process in Illinois is fairly complicated, and it involves several governmental entities, not just the school district or the taxing bodies, but also townships, counties, and even the Illinois Department of Revenue gets involved. As a larger With that said, we're about 60% in DuPage County, and Naperville Township is the largest township for us. And then Will County is the remaining 40%. Township in Will County. The process does start at the township level with the township assessor doing the initial assessment of all properties. So that is, that is kind of ongoing throughout the calendar year, that the township assessor is completing his assessments. In the fall, the township assessors turn that data over to the county supervisor of assessments. They are charged with reviewing those assessments, providing a level of reasonableness in the assessment, as well as applying That's the main exemptions being the homeowner's exemption and the senior citizen's exemption. Department of Revenue, again, reviewed for reasonableness. And if it's found to be a little out of line with statewide data, there's what's known as an equalization number that's applied to that, so that it would either slightly increase or decrease every assessment throughout the county if that assessment's done out of line. So all that's sort of occurring in the late summer into the fall, prior to our levy adoption process, which starts this evening. Once we do adopt the levy, we still are involved and work closely with the county to finalize that levy and ultimately bill the residents or taxpayers. PTEL, the levy that we adopt will not be the final amount extended to our taxpayers. There will be an adjustment applied to that, which is known as the limiting rate, before that becomes the final extension. And the real driver of that adjustment is going to be that, as of today, we do not know the amount of new property in the district. We have pretty good estimates from our township assessors and counties, but that number's not yet final. So they will adjust our levy down once that number is finalized and once we know the final number. It is the county treasurer that is charged with the tax bills and collection. That process starts in May with the first payment due June 1st and the second payment due September 1st. And again, it's the county treasurer that ultimately remits those funds to the district. So just wanted to start talking through this a little bit, and I'll provide some updates to some of these processes that have occurred, as this is a pretty unique year. But just to kind of provide an overview, the district is not responsible for property tax assessment, applying the exemptions, administering the assessment challenges, the billing or collection process. So there's a lot that is going on both before and after tonight's levy adoption that's being done on our behalf by the township assessors and by the county and by the counties. All these steps impact how the district's levy is applied across taxpayers, and ultimately, how our levy that we will pass in December is allocated across all taxpayers throughout the district. I would encourage taxpayers with questions about their specific property to work directly with their township assessor or with the appropriate county department. So as mentioned, there's been a few unique factors this year that's kind of worked its way through this process. Starting with that township assessor piece, so that first step, by law, all properties are reassessed every four years by the township assessor. So you can think of it as three out of four years, they're really just focused on new property, they're focused on property sales or transactions. But then in that fourth year, there's a requirement that they reassess every property. And 2023 was that fourth year. As a result, what we generally see is that's the year where there's the most significant changes to our, the property values throughout the district. And that makes sense. That's their one chance every four years to really kind of reset the property values and assess each property. And we're in talking with our township assessors and the counties, again, we don't know some of the exact numbers yet, but we're expecting to see significant increases in assessed values in the current property market. We actually expect these increases to exceed what we're going to ask for as part of our levy, which means we'll actually decrease the tax rate that's being applied to taxpayers. So even though with high CPI, we are going to ask for a significant increase in our levy, it is a piece of good news that that's at least keeping up with the property market. The other piece that I will say again in talking with our townships and with our counties, we are in an area where commercial and industrial development has held pretty strong. If you've seen some of the news recently coming out of Cook County, they're seeing a lot of challenges as the commercial markets, and specifically some of the downtown market, or some of the large commercial office complexes have struggled to come back after COVID. And ultimately, what that does is shift tax burden from commercial properties to residential. So we're generally fortunate in this area that we haven't seen that trend yet. And this reassessment seems to, at least initially, be positively increasing the assessed values of all property taxpayers. The second change this year that occurred at the state level is that the state has increased the amount of, the amount of the exemptions for homeowners and seniors. So this is, this is really giving homeowners a little bit of a benefit or a tax rebate compared to those commercial or industrial payers. The first $6,000 traditionally of your home value was not taxed. That amount's gone up to $8,000, and then the senior exemption is an additional amount that's gone up as well. So again, what this means is that even though housing fair values have increased, some of that will be partially offset by this increase in exemption. So again, when we start to try and assess how tonight's levy will impact all taxpayers, that does represent a little bit of a relief for our residential taxpayers, possibly, but possibly shifts a little bit of that burden back to the commercial or industrial tax base. The final, the final piece of news, if you live in DuPage County, you may have noticed you've not received your assessment notification yet. The assessment notifications have been delayed. There's been some new software implementations and other changes at the county that has caused that delay. For comparison, Will County assessments went out in mid-August, so DuPage is about two and a half months behind. They kind of set November 15th as their kind of, you know, soft deadline, if you will, and we're obviously quickly approaching that. What that means for the district is that it increases the chance that we'll see some tax challenges or tax refunds that are not settled in time for our exemption, excuse me, for the extension to come out. And that could ultimately delay or defer to next year some of our tax payments. So we'll be following this closely. We've received confirmation that there's, there's, there's still, do not believe that we will see a delay in tax bills going out in the spring, but that would obviously be the most dire scenario that could actually cause a delay in that first tax payment completely. That would, that would be a significant challenge for us, as well as almost every other taxing district in DuPage County. So moving on to the tentative levy request, tonight's tentative levy that we're presenting for the operating fund is for $333,300,000. That represents about a 6.27% increase over last year's extension of just of $313,600,000. The bond and interest fund money shown here, we do not take action on. We just take action on that operating fund amount. The operating fund levy increase is limited to CPI or 5% plus an allowance for new property. And this is based on the 2022 CPI, which, as we've covered throughout the forecast and budget presentations, really starting last winter, was above that 5% number again. So this is the second year in a row that CPI has exceeded that 5% increase, and as a result, the district's not receiving the full allocation of CPI. Final levy that's extended to our taxpayers, that amount will be adjusted down by the county once that new property number is determined. As mentioned, we do not take action on that bond and interest amount, but we are required as part of our truth and taxation notice to notify our taxpayers of that amount. Our debt service schedule. So last year's debt service amount that we levied was just over $27 million. It'll be $25.5 million for this levy year 2023. So our operating amount is increasing, but that's being partially offset by a decrease in the debt service amount. As a reminder, our final bond payment is December 30 of 2026. The payments are scheduled to decrease each year up until then, and these payments are at a fixed interest rate, so this isn't going to change or be impacted by the recent increases in interest rates. Just want to spend a few minutes talking through our justification for requesting the 5% increase. As the board knows, property taxes represent our largest and most consistent revenue source, representing about 77% of district revenues. We've talked about how state and federal revenues have effectively remained flat or only increased marginally. They've not kept up with that CPI number or really come anywhere close to that. In many cases, actually exceed the stated consumer price index. As the board knows, our Illinois evidence-based funding percentage of 85% recognizes that the district does not have the resource necessary to meet all EBF components. So by asking for the full amount, we are able to, under the PTEL legislation, we are hopefully at least going to be able to continue forward with the resources we do have, and hopefully start to work towards improving that evidence-based funding percentage. Just real quick, a couple required disclosures by the state. First, we have reviewed that this levy would leave us with sufficient operating fund, excuse me, with sufficient fund balance. Our operating fund cash and investments number at June 30 of 2023 was approximately $207 million. That amount is after the first property tax installment in June, so that's really, really the significant driver of that amount. That amount's offset by salaries and benefits payable, accounts payable, and various construction commitments and other liabilities, as well as just keeping a remaining balance for adequate reserves. So we have reviewed that we're not asking for an amount that would leave us in a situation where we would struggle to have adequate reserves and liquidity, but we're also not asking for too much either. Finally, just want to talk through the taxpayer impact this evening. This levy maintains a stable and actually slightly declining tax rate, as mentioned earlier. So although we are asking to increase the operating tax levy, the, because we are seeing significant increase in assessed values, that rate will actually decline a little bit. For a home with an assessed $299 increase in total property tax payments. That's approximately a 4.67% increase to that taxpayer. The actual impact will obviously vary by taxpayer based on changes in their assessed value compared to the district as a whole. And then, just kind of to reconcile that 4.67 number with the full levy amount, that remaining increase is really what gets driven by new property or is adjusted as part of that county adjustment. So finally, just want to cover the next steps to pass this levy and adopt it. We are required to pass the levy in a public meeting before the last Tuesday in December. We have identified the December 4th Board meeting to do that. We'll start with a levy public hearing at 7:00 PM and then adopt the meeting, adopt the levy as an action item as part of the regular meeting. The levy is filed with both DuPage and Will Counties. And then this levy, just a reminder, is consistent with the budget we passed for the current fiscal year, and we will incorporate this levy into the presentation on February 2024 when we start presenting our 2025 budget. So with that, I will, I'm open up to any questions of the board.
I think I'll just open it up to the board for any comments or questions, including if Victoria has anything she would like to ask about the budget.
Okay, I'll start. Slide 10. I just want to reiterate again. So if I'm looking at the bar graph on the right, the tax rate for residents in District 204 has been trending downwards for the past four years, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And you'll see, you can see the driver kind of between that debt service and operating piece. That debt service has gone down pretty significantly. Operating was really pretty stable for the last four years, but we will see, we anticipate we'll see a decrease with this 2023 levy.
Okay, so I wanted to make that clear, that the district is doing its best to lower the overall tax rate burden on our residents. Now for the bad news. Slide 5. First bullet point, I wanted to just reiterate again, the district is not responsible for property assessments, applying the exemptions. And if you go to the next slide, slide 6, residents need to be aware, made aware of this quadrennial reassessment. So I'm going to give a hypothetical here, Matt, and you tell me if it's true. When they're reassessing our homes, more oftentimes than not, they probably don't reassess it for a lower cost. They reassess it at a higher value, correct? They reassess it at a higher value, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if the overall tax burden on a resident, let's just say it's 10%, and if your home was previously assessed at $100,000 and you're paying 10%, so what would that be? $10,000 that you would pay on $100,000, correct? If now your quadrennial reassessment, which is going to go up significantly, your tax rate could still be at 10%, but since your home is valued at $150,000 now, you're going to be paying $15,000 even though the tax rate may not have went up, the reassessment of which we have no control of went up, so the residents are now paying more, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And I think where I would, what we talked about a couple of times, but I'll just reiterate. Obviously, we want to make sure all taxpayers are assessed equitably. For us, I would advocate on behalf of our residents that it's important that we look at those commercial industrial assessments. Those are the ones that do have the potential to swing more significantly. They're assessed a little differently than a residential property. They do go down in times of recession or challenges. Again, we've seen in other areas of the state where there's a significant burden being shift to residents because those commercial developments aren't being maybe supported in the same ways they were previously. So I think that talks a little bit where our role and where as a district we can make a difference is really to advocate for commercial development and for industrial development in our district, where our residents can support those where possible as well. Because that really is that really is tax burden onto the residents.
Can I just have you expand on that? So I'm just going to have you expand on that. So if a business, corporation or business, if they're, if they get a lower reassessment, you're saying that burden of now they're reassessed less, that burden is passed on to us, the residential homeowners. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct. Yeah. So our, and again, our levy is a dollar amount. It's not a rate. And so that rate changes a little bit every year. As we looked at, the rate has been going down, which is good. But that's kind of how that delta happens, is that we issue a levy saying what the total amount is that we're requiring to operate the school system. And then independent of that, the assessed values are being examined. And that's determined how that amount is spread over the different taxing bodies. So that, so again, for sort of a real life example in our district, if you look at like the Fox Valley Mall property, for example, that assessed value has pretty much stayed flat or even declined over the past 10-plus years. And so that mall, which maybe used to pay 1% of the total taxes of the district, is now only paying a third of a percent. Well, that burden has to go somewhere and ultimately it goes to other residents.
So just to summarize, the reason I our tax rate go down and then why I brought up why our properties are going to be reassessed is because I know when people see their tax bills and they see 70% of it going to their schools, that we're all going to get calls and we're going to get yelled at, that we ballooned up the tax bill. But the community needs to know how that's calculated. We haven't changed the rate. Their assessment has changed. And we wish that the state contributed more to public education, but the fact of the matter is Illinois pushes that burden onto local residential property homeowners and equalize assessed values. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I got a comment because I do. Slide 7. All we're really doing here today is removing 319 to 333, right?
313 to 333, correct.
Yeah, 313 to 333. So inflation could be 20%. And all that we can ask for from a legal and practical standpoint is a 6.27% increase.
Correct.
And that's the 5% limit with the guesstimate on the new property.
Correct.
We're saying we're going to try to increase our levy by this 6% to go from 313 to 333. And that's all we're doing with the levy. All this other stuff with the assessments and the bills, that's not this government body's job. All we're doing is moving the needle right there.
Correct.
Well, it could be 20%. All we can ask for is 6. And then we move back down to slide 9. Property taxes represent 77% of our budget. And that 77% of our budget is the 313, the 338, right?
Correct.
Thanks.
I had just one, just one comment on slide 8, just to kind of remind us as we look at the bonds that provided for our referendum and just commending that what we've been able to do from a business standpoint and the fastidiousness that you guys have taken to see that, you know, our bonds will levy out in '26 or 20, yeah, '26. And that the way that they were, that we facilitated those, that the increase in interest will not have an impact because it was a steady interest rate. So just commendable to you as well as your predecessor on the way that that was financed.
And just to reiterate, I know we've talked about before, we are, you know, these bonds were, we did have opportunities. You do get windows when you issue them. You do get windows to refinance. And we did take advantage of those when appropriate. We did save some significant interest expense as part of that. And we were able to do that without extending the original life. So these are, this is the, these are bonds that were originally issued, these final ones to build Matea. So you know Matea's getting close to 20 years old because they were 20-year-old bonds.
And I just, it's just important for the community to recognize, you know, the focus that we stayed and that the attention to detail as those opportunities and that we took advantage of those. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? So on slide 9, we were at 85% adequacy for funding and that's like a 1% increase over where we were last year. Is that correct?
Correct. We continue to move up slightly. I will point out the main driver of that is
I was going to get to.
Is the fact that the state thinks we should be contributing even more property taxes. So that's really been the driver as opposed to additional state funding.
So we continue to perform with this 85% evidence-based funding model. And I'm going back to Mr. Rising's question about the house. So if I had a house worth $100,000, so we create a, this is how much money we want for our levy, right? $331,000. And so everyone right now doesn't know what their new assessment's going to be or whatever. So if I had a $100,000 house, and let's just say for you, you're part of the $331,000 is a 10% tax, right? So you're going to pay $10,000. And now that assessor comes in and says, your house now is worth $150,000, your tax rate probably is going to show a drop because you're now going to pull $10,000 from that homeowner on a $150,000 assessment.
Right. So we, and again, we did, we do, we are required to present the taxpayer impact or the estimated taxpayer impact. So we do have to do a little bit more than just the one slide Board Member Krubus pointed out. But so our best estimate is that the average homeowner will see a 4.67% increase in the total amount paid. So that does reflect that we expect the average homeowner to see an increase in their assessed value, an increase in our levy, but that their home value should increase by more than we're increasing the levy. Again, that's looking at it district-wide. So there will, there will be some homeowners that see a larger increase, some that see a lesser increase. Again, it emphasizes a district spread across a relatively large geographic area. Sometimes we see Will County properties appreciate faster than DuPage or vice versa. And that can shift tax burden across parts of our community. Again, we're not able, we're not able to, as part of our levy, say, you know, how this is distributed. That's done through the assessor's office. So I do agree it's important we keep our eye on what our role is, which is to pass the levy. But we also do need to, I think, be mindful of what the impact is across the district for our taxpayers, again, for our residents, for our commercial taxpayers, our industrial taxpayers as well. So.
We are limited though by that 5%. So even if CPI was whatever, 8%, 9%, we aren't able to increase beyond 5% maximum.
Right. And this is the second year, this is the second year in a row we're limited by that. So we've lost, to CPI, we've lost ground. We've lost about 3.5% the last two years.
I think people like to talk about two pieces of info. What's the exact dollars I have to pay on my house and what's the rate? The rate actually might go down for people compared to what they saw last year, but it's because the valuation that they got through this assessment, which is not part of our responsibility, went up. So.
And it is different. You know, this is, other taxes you pay, whether it's sales tax or income tax, is always quoted in a rate, right? And the challenge with property tax is that rate can changes every year. So it does become a little confusing. Sales tax where you can know exactly what you're going to pay. You know, if I show up to the register with $100 worth of goods, I can calculate exactly what my tax is going to be. Property taxes are a little different because it depends not only what your value is, but what the value of every other property in the county or in our case, in the district is. So it's a different type of tax. Again, there's a lot of moving parts and, you know, I'd encourage taxpayers to understand not just our role in it, but again, to understand some of the other roles that the assessors and the counties are playing as well.
Well, it's also why we want some of the blighted or under-producing commercial areas in our district to improve because that helps all of our homeowners in removing some of the burden that they're carrying. So the more we see new developments, commercial developments or improved evaluation, the better for our homeowners.
Yep, absolutely. And again, I know the board has worked with both cities to encourage various commercial developments. I would just put an asterisk, "commercial developments that do not involve property tax incentives," right? Because unfortunately, there are situations where you see commercial development, but it's contingent on a TIF or another property tax assessment where then, you know, we kind of get back to where we started then.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone have any items? Nope. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. Any opposed? Okay.